It's on. All right.
It's seven o'clock, time to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, please.
Dear Lord, make sure that everyone in the community is safe, warm, in this cool brisk evening. Make sure that everybody's safe as they continue on with work and being around others and staying healthy. Please give council sound mind to make the decisions necessary for the city. And for those that are working for the city, make sure they stay safe over the next coming week with the cold weather coming. So in your name we pray, amen.
Call the rural man.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Child?
Here.
Mr. Dunphy?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here. Here. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular meeting in the October tenth? Motion to adopt. So moved, second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes. All right, citizens' comments? Business and organizational comments? Committee discussions, anything? Departmental updates?
Actually, Mr. President, we did have a finance meeting. We went over the first round of the budget for next year. It actually looked really pretty good. It was probably the best budget I've seen since I've been involved with council. And I think Scott and Taylor are doing a great job with managing that and the department heads as well as managing their own departments. I don't really think there was a lot. I think that's pretty clean. There were a couple of things we discussed. Yeah, and I, and I think unless Taylor or Scott have anything to add to that, I think, I don't think there was much to really review or go over. So we could probably bring this forward if you guys didn't think there was anything else. There were some small additions. I think that was... I don't, I don't think so. I mean, so some of them were like tree maintenance money because we always seem to perennially be searching for tree maintenance money. And trees are a menace to our sidewalks and streets every year. Maybe a few small things like that, but everything pretty small, I thought. But we can, we can have another meeting. I just felt like they were small maintenance items.
Say nothing else, maybe you just summarize for us so nobody can break.
I could do that too. Because we're gonna have to approve a three-year budget at least so we can present it to accounting auditor. Month, right?
Probably, yeah, three months.
Three months, right?
Yeah, yeah, three months.
You said three years. Oh, did I say three years? Sorry, I meant, I meant to say quarter or three months.
Yeah.
Three months, so. So, yeah, I think that's fine if you want to go ahead and bring the small changes, the changes we had and just send it all council.
There was one large change you guys tapped me with finding an HR company to update all the policies and procedures. Of course, we have somebody does it for P. And I think Fire's got their, or has updated one, so for the rest of the city. I got a quota between twenty and twenty-three, which is still cheaper than Fire. So that's a rough quote. I don't know if we want to throw that in there now, if we want to wait till later, put that in. So.
I'd say a budget for it.
Okay.
I'm getting budget for it, so it sounds good. Okay. Departmental updates?
All right, well, since the last update, everyone's calls are tapered off. We do expect an increase as we get closer to the holiday season. Since the last update, I have two additional grants that have been submitted through the fire department. One is a pet grant. That's going to help go towards replacement of AED devices. The AEDs that we currently have have been discontinued. The peripherals, which are the batteries and the pads, are supposedly still being offered, but they're on a national back order. We ordered the supplies back in May. They still haven't arrived, so I actually last week canceled those orders. And this pet grant will help go towards the purchase of one new AED for fire department. This grant will be available again in January and January, I'll hit it again for another one. And then we'll get the AED replaced out here as well. So we'll have AEDs that are actually compliant that we can still get supplies for. The problem we have right now, the AEDs we carry in our trucks, eventually those batteries are going to discharge and the pads will expire illegally because I have a drug license with fire department, we can't use those. That's why, so that's why we're doing that. The other one would be the FM Global Fire Prevention Grant. This is a grant that I've actually been awarded a couple of times in the past. Now, this is going to be for purchase of new rugged laptops for use in the field for EMS calls, inspections, fire reports. I'll hack it out of the field. I'm still waiting on a couple of dates for civil service tests from the Civil Service Commission. What I asked was for them to get me a couple of days that they were all available. And I would pick one of those days so we can actually get test scheduled. The 2020 FEMA grant funding has finally come in. I believe the payment should have hit the account now from FEMA. So once the money is appropriated, there's new money coming in, which I think is tonight, or is it the last meeting? Do you remember Taylor?
I don't. It should be tonight. We talked about it the last time.
So once that happens, I'll be able to submit for payment this week, get the benefit paid, and that, and that pair of books. Now, we've got a training scheduled with the Hawkeye guys in real rate. This is going to take place on January eighth. Some of us have had that training on the EMS side. What it is, we go through the cars with the company and run scenarios in the event of a fire or EMS call. A lot of people aren't familiar with the layout of train cars, the tracks, specific crossings where you can access the tracks and the cars if there was something that happened while they were in traffic. I'm currently partnering with Red Cross again to take delivery of smoke detectors. The fire department actually has a smoke detector program, but we currently don't have the funds in that program to buy more smoke detectors. So I partner with Red Cross, going through their paperwork. They're going to drop some supply off tomorrow, I think. And we should start being able to install smoke detectors in the community. Again, I've had a lot of requests for that. And the big thing is the December holiday event schedule. So December's a really busy month for the fire department as far as PR goes. December third is going to be annual fire conference breakfast that'll happen at the Elks again this year. And all these will be posted on the fire department's Facebook page as well. So as we get closer to these dates, these will be posted so everybody will see it. December fourteenth and fifteenth is going to be annual toy, Christmas toy giveaway. And of course, Santa Claus will be there again. December sixteenth is going to be the Santa parade. That is the one where, if you guys remember during COVID, we actually built a sleigh with Captain Sherman and we held Santa balls around town back then. The people that couldn't leave their homes, were afraid to leave their homes, could actually still see Santa Claus. We got pretty well. And then December seventeenth is going to be delivery of the Christmas baskets. This will be the seventy-fourth year that we've done, that we've actually had a Christmas basket for today. And for those that don't know, last couple of weeks, we've been painting hydrants. We're not remaining cleaning them up, painting them according to NFPA cover code. What that means is if we have a mutual fire and anybody else that comes into town, you know, the fire department, can see that hydrant and they know what color the top of the hydrant is, so they know what to expect as far as water flow from the hydrant. That's why some people think we're painting the ones that have the green tops for Christmas. I guess it does look festive, but they're actually specific water flows for the hydrants. So, okay.
Any questions for Chief Parker?
I have a question, Chief. The, the grants that you've applied for, for the AEDs, is that a competitive grant? Or is that if you apply, more likely you're going to get funded for it?
That one's just a pep. That's honestly money just laying out there for the city to go after.
So if we apply, we'll resent it then, so that's good. So we will have something AED.
Yes.
That's great.
It's not going to pay for the AEDs in their entirety. I think they're one thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, the ones that we decided to go with. So this will pay for a thousand dollars toward each AED, but it cuts a lot out.
Sure. Yeah, I have a question. Departmental breakfast, are you going to deliver?
Yeah, we'll do the same thing we did before. As long as we have enough people, when we get closer to that date, I'll have that posting up as well. And we'll have some department numbers for people to call and if we can deliver, I can do.
Anybody else? I could, Chief Parker, thank you.
All right. First reading. Ordinance seventy dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it, thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to assign the auditor and deputy auditor as the delegate and alternate delegate, respectively, to the regional council of government and declaring an emergency. Whereas a regional, regional council of government was created pursuant to chapter one sixty-seven of the Ohio Revised Code to foster cooperation between municipalities. And whereas the creation of the regional council of government was primarily to establish a central collection facility or a regional income tax agency for the purpose of administering the income tax laws of the various participating communities. Whereas the city needs to delegate the city auditor as the delegate and the deputy auditor, auditor as the alternate delegate of the regional council of governments. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. That the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to send the attached nomination of delegate and alternate delegate to the regional council of governments attached to and incorporated by reference to this ordinance as exhibit one. The city auditor Taylor Sappington shall be nominated as the delegate to the regional council of government. The deputy auditor Judy Smith shall be nominated as the alternate delegate to the regional council of governments. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, article four, sections four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Willing enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules fourteen day of November two thousand twenty-two.
Any council discussion on said matter? Motion to suspend. So moved, second.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Motion to adopt. So moved, second.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yeah.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Okay. More on that. Ordinance seventy-one dash twenty-two, I need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it, thank you.
An ordinance creating fund number seven fifteen, credit memo fund and declaring an emergency. Whereas the accounting on the city's utility credit memos needs to be cleaned up. Whereas the city shall create fund number seven fifteen, credit memo fund. Whereas the city's new accounting system requires this change as well. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city auditor shall create the fund number seven fifteen, credit memo fund in accordance with Ohio law. This ordinance shall be passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one, as an emergency in the operation of the city government and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Willing enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the fourteenth day of November two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any council discussion on said matter?
What exactly is this one supposed to do?
This is the annual, end of every year where we balance out all, all the, all the line items at the end of the year for the budget. Taylor could probably be more.
As far as the surplus goes into you.
So anything that needs zeroed out at the end of the year? It's, I don't mean to, I don't mean to correct, it's a little different. The, the new accounting system for the utility bill. It will, excuse me. What we used to do is if you paid extra on your utility bill, it would all just go to the water pump. So even if you have a trash and sewer bill and you paid over a hundred dollars, the accounting system would put it in the water pump until you use that credit.
Oh, this was just for utility then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Do we still do that year end?
We will, yeah.
Okay.
It's always the last meeting usually, but I can bring it.
That's what I thought this was.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. So, yeah, so it's bad accounting practice. And then the software company in the middle of transition, two weeks ago, said that there was an opportunity to make that hard switch and make the system behave in a more appropriate manner. And so when you pay over your bill, it will now go into a credit fund.
Then does that go towards their bills for the next year? Or will it go into like a unclaimed fund situation where they have to?
Yeah, it'll still be applied to their bill. It's more so of where the money sits while it's credited. When you, when you put it all in one fund, you get some funky accounting messes where you have like a negative water balance and a positive sewer balance because of this credit accounting. And this just creates basically what should have been there a long time ago. They were actually surprised to see our system behave the way it did. And I said, well, hey, let's do it. We'll get a switch.
Thanks for the clarification. Okay. Any more discussion? All right, motion to suspend. So moved, second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes. Motion to adopt. So moved, second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Four hundred and forty-six.
Thanks.
Could we add a page, could we add a page to this one? All right. Ordinance seventy-two dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please.
I will. Thank you.
An ordinance enacting a code of ordinance for the city of Nelsonville revising, amending, restating, codifying, and complying with certain existing general ordinance of the political subdivision dealing with subjects embraced in such code of ordinances and declaring an emergency. Whereas the present general and permanent ordinances of the political subdivision are inadequate, quickly arranged, and classified, and are insufficient in form and substance for the complete preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare of the community and for the proper conduct of its affairs. And whereas the acts of the legislature of the state of Ohio empower and authorize the political subdivision to revise, amend, restate, codify, and compile any existing ordinances and all new ordinances not heretofore adopted or published, and to incorporate such ordinances into one ordinance book form. And whereas the legislative authority of this political subdivision has authorized a general compilation, revision, and codification of the ordinance of the political subdivision of a general permanent nature and publication of such ordinance in book form. And whereas it is necessary to provide for the usual daily operation of the municipality and for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare of the municipality, that this ordinance take effect at an early date. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The general ordinances of the political subdivision as revised, amended, restated, codified, and compiled in book form are hereby adopted as and shall constitute the code ordinances, ordinances of the city of Nelsonville. Such code of ordinances as adopted in section one shall consist of the following title. Nelsonville, Ohio Code of Ordinances Charter of Nelsonville, Ohio. Title one, general provisions. Title three, administration. Title five, public works. Title seven, traffic code. Title nine, general regulations. Title eleven, business regulations. Title thirteen, general offenses. Title fifteen, land usage. Table of special ordinances and parallel references. All prior ordinances pertaining to the subjects treated in such code of ordinances shall be deemed repealed from and after the effective date of this ordinance as set as they are included and reordained in whole or in part in such code. Provided such repeal shall not affect any offense committed or penalty incurred or any right established prior to the effective date of this ordinance, nor shall such repeal affect the provisions of ordinances levying taxes, appropriating money, annexing or detaching territory, establishing franchises or granting special rights to certain persons, authorizing public improvements, authorizing the issuance of bond or borrowing of money, authorizing the purchase or sale of real or personal property, granting or accepting easement, plat, or dedication of land to public use, vacating or setting the boundaries of streets or other public places, nor shall such repeal affect any other ordinance of a temporary or special nature or pertaining to subjects not contained in or covered by the code. Such code shall be deemed published as of the day of its adoption and approval by the legislative authority and the clerk of the political subdivision is hereby authorized and ordered to file a copy of such code of ordinances in the office of the clerk. Such code shall be in full force and effect as provided in section six. And such code shall be presumptive evidence in all courts and places of the ordinances and all provisions, sections, penalties, and regulations therein contain and of the date of passage and that the same is properly signed, attested, recorded, and approved. And that any public hearings and notices thereof as required have, by law, have been given. This ordinance is declared to be an emergency measure for the immediate preservation of the peace, health, safety, and general welfare of the people of the city of Nelsonville and shall be, and shall take effect at the earliest date provided by law. Willing enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the fourteenth day of November two thousand twenty-two. Does anybody know what that says?
Did, did anybody miss anything? Any council discussion?
Yeah.
Think you plugged up a word in there. Let me show you something. Here it is.
What is, I don't understand what the purpose of this ordinance is.
We're an actual new code. An actual new code.
Okay. Well, it, it, so we're repealing the code of this ordinance and new code will be enacted in the future? It's just not clear to me what the new code is that is being introduced. Or is it? It's in there somewhere?
You've got to search it now. Yeah, it's all organized. And it's all reorganized.
Yeah, so American Legal Publishing assisted us. City usually... Yeah, I didn't write any code. So American Legal Publishing assisted us with re-codifying. So usually the city has a code updated every five years, like every other city. And if you pass new what ordinances, you just have to go look for the new ordinance. And the code's not updated. So what this is, is now since twenty fifteen, we've got, what, seven years of ordinances passed? And this updates it all so that it's one, one code.
Right.
And this adopts it. So you guys have to legally say, we, we want to adopt this.
That makes sense, okay.
Yeah, our, our previous legal advisory used to do it every five years, I think it was. And we'd all get a big binder and this and everything, but. So now the, this is all online even now for us.
Correct.
So.
It's been all in five years, I missed them.
And it contains the Oxford comma.
Oh, good.
That's right. Bob had some changes and then Oxford comma, he made sure it was in there.
Any more council discussion? Okay. Motion to suspend. So moved, second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yeah.
Ready?
Yes. Motion to adopt. So moved, second.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman? I'm just letting Mr. Dunphy.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yeah.
Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Real quick question. Is this already been uploaded to?
No, we were waiting for your approval. So. Just to further expand, we've already started to talk some really fancy overpass. We can do the entire website as well.
Okay. All right. Everyone. Ordinance seventy-three dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please. I'll introduce it. Sorry, Greg.
An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two appropriations to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following. Sum of three thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance line item four two five dash one zero 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 dash eight zero one one one, K nine expenses and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city police department K nine has some additional training and equipment needs in the near future. Whereas the appropriations need amended to appropriate monies from the unappropriated balance to line item number four two five dash one zero 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 dash eight zero one one one, K nine expenses. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The two thousand twenty-two appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following funds. The sum of three thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance to line item number four two five dash one zero 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 dash eight zero one one one, K nine expenses. The total unappropriated balance is decreased by said amount. The total appropriation in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amounts. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure. We showed it to...
Say it again?
We need, we don't need that if you're reading.
No, no.
Let's see. This ordinance shall be effective at the earliest date provided by law. Willing enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the twenty-eighth day of November two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Ordinance seventy-four dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it. I'll introduce it, thank you.
An ordinance authorizing city manager Scott Frank and police chief Scott Fitch to enter into a contract with the village of Bookville for the Nelsonville Police Department to provide police services and mutual aid to the village of Bookville. Whereas the city of Nelsonville desires to enter into a new contract with the village of Bookville to provide Bookville with police services and mutual aid. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City manager Scott Frank and police chief Scott Fitch shall have the authority to enter into a contract with the village of Bookville for the Nelsonville Police Department to provide the village of Bookville with police services and mutual aid. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect that they are estate provided by law. Willing enacted by council on second reading the twenty-eighth day of November two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any council discussion? I know I have a question. It was adjusted a little bit for inflation. Three percent? Three percent. Okay. Three percent is what we told them. The contract hasn't been drawn up yet, but three percent is what will be in there. Okay. Any more questions?
That's modeling. Have you gotten any feedback from Bookville on how it went on?
They're happy as far as everybody I talked to.
Okay. Any more council discussion? All right. We didn't need to do that, but. There were some questions earlier on. All right, guys. Ordinance seventy-five dash twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please. I'll introduce it, thank you.
Thank you. And ordinance increasing the sewer rate six percent first two thousand twenty-three. Whereas new sewer rates must be increased effective January first two thousand twenty-three to meet the funding for a new sewer plant. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. Effective January first. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows.
Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows.
Hold on, is that right?
Okay. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-three, the sewer rates are increased as follows. Okay, in town, fifteen hundred gallons minimum for two thousand twenty-three is nineteen dollars and fifty-one cents. The twenty-twenty-two rate was eighteen dollars and forty-one cents. For every thousand gallons over the fifteen hundred gallons, the two thousand twenty-three rate will be eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents. The twenty-twenty-two rate is eleven dollars and twelve cents. The out-of-town minimum for two thousand twenty-three is twenty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. The twenty-twenty-two rate was twenty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. For every thousand gallons over the fifteen hundred for out-of-town, it's seventeen dollars and sixty-nine cents, and the twenty-twenty-two rate was sixteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. And Hocking County Commissioners pay five dollars and four cents per one thousand gallon for two thousand twenty-three. It was four dollars and seventy-five cents in two thousand twenty-two. Trash rates are increased as follows. From twelve dollars and sixty-six cents effective April first, two thousand twenty-one to thirteen dollars and seven cents effective April first, two thousand twenty-two per customer per month for curbside refuse and rubbish collection. For residents or unit up to seven bags. Recycled bin and service included per customer per month for curbside recycling. Two dollars per container per month for optional renter rental totter or equivalent. Five dollars per sticker for special rubbish items, large items and trash bags with two bags per sticker above the allotted quantity. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-eighth day of November two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. All right. Ordinance seventy-six dash twenty-two. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Yeah, this is the zero-zero-zero-zero-zero.
An ordinance authorizing submission to the Athens County Board of Commissioners of municipal participation for annexation of six point eight-five-one acres, more or less owned by the city of Nelsonville within the York Township. Pursuant to seven-zero-nine-point-one-six will be a higher revised code. Whereas the city of Nelsonville owns a six point eight-five-one acre parcel situated in York Township, section ten, township twelve, range fifteen, containing river lots six-twenty-nine and six-thirty, which is city-owned land, which is land currently not within the city of Nelsonville. Whereas section seven-one-nine-point-zero-six of the Ohio Revised Code allows municipalities to petition the board of county commissioners to annex contiguous territory owned only by the municipality, a county, or the state. Whereas authorization by city council by ordinance is required under O R C seven-zero-nine-point-one-four to submit a municipal annexation petition through the Athens County Board of Commissioners for annexation of the city-owned land to the city of Nelsonville. Whereas this council finds the annexation of the city-owned land will provide for operation effectiveness and a proper, and I'm sorry, an improved taxpayer oversight of city assets. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager is hereby authorized to sign and submit a municipal petition for annexation of the contiguous city-owned land situated in York Township, section ten, township twelve, range fifteen, containing river lots six-twenty-nine and six-thirty, consisting of six point eight-one-eight-five-one acres, more or less, Athens City Parcel ID P zero-one dash... That's zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-six dash two zero-two, and P zero-one dash zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-eight dash two. P zero-one dash zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-six dash zero-zero, and P zero-one dash zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-eight dash one. P zero-one zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-six dash zero-one, and P zero dash zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-eight dash zero-zero. P zero-one zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-four dash zero-zero, and P zero-one dash zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-five dash zero-zero. P zero-one dash zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-two dash zero-zero. P zero-one six-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-five dash zero-one. P zero-one dash zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-four dash zero-one. And P zero-one dash zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-three dash zero-zero. P zero-one dash zero-zero-one-zero-zero-six-nine-five dash zero-two of the petition. To the Athens County Board of Commissioners pursuant to section seven-one-nine-point-one-three and seven-one-nine-point-two-one of the Ohio Revised Code. The city manager is hereby authorized to perform all acts and execute all documents as may be required by Athens County during the annexation process. The map plat of the city-owned land to be annexed are attached to this ordinance as a equal one. In accordance with section seven-oh-nine-point-zero-two-C of the Ohio Revised Code, the city attorney is hereby appointed as the agent for the city with full power and full authority to prosecute the proceedings necessary to affect the annexation and with all powers and authorities set for the petition. It is found that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council resulted in this formal action or in meetings open to the public and compliance with all legal requirements, including section one-twenty-one-point-twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-eighth day of November two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, Susan.
Mr. President, what's going to be the timeframe of that once that's made through second reading?
Once it makes it to the second reading, we sign it, and then...
We've got to take it up. The county commissioners have to approve it. Should be approved by March fifteenth. We have a deadline of six months after we have filed it. That's a deadline for sure, but I'm hoping by March fifteenth.
Pretty talkative. Well, yeah, about it.
Everybody likes it.
Me too. Yeah, me too. Yeah. Oh, gosh. That's good. All right. Let's go together. Yeah. Let's get two holding hands. Skipping down the sidewalk. I know, we got one more. Okay. Ordinance seventy-two, or I'm sorry, seventy-seven dash twenty-two. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept the resignation of firefighter George Chilco. Whereas city council has been informed of personal matters involving firefighter Chilco, including his request to resign effective January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And whereas an agreement must be executed governing the end of firefighter Chilco's employment. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city of Nelsonville hereby authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement with firefighter Chilco governing his end of employment and resignation effective January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. This or... This is not.
It isn't.
It is. Okay. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven-thirty-one-point-thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to immediately resolve firefighter Chilco's employment with the city. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by first reading under suspension of the rules this fourteenth day of November two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any council discussion on that matter? Motion to suspend. So moved. Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Clement?
Yes.
Yes. Motion. Motion to adopt. So moved. Second.
Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
No.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Okay.
City managers report.
Short tonight. Jason gave me his list.
How many times has it been?
Eighteen since his last update. He's still picking up leaves. He said he'd keep calling, which he gives my number. So that's not cool, but it's seven-five-three-one-seven-fourteen-thirty-seven-one-four-three-seven. We're going to be picking up until summer seventeen on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So we'll keep doing that. Waterline. So we're changing out a waterline on Riverside Drive. We've had multiple leaks with it. That's our problem child now. I think that only affects three customers, but those three customers know what a pain that is. So that'll be done soon. What's that?
Is it chipped off?
Yes. Yes, indeed. The sewer project has begun over on Murray Lane. If you haven't been on that side of town yet, there's manholes everywhere and big ditches. So the sewer project is well underway. They're moving over to River Street next. They expect to be going underneath the railroad tracks by Christmas time. And then from there, it'll be to Monroe and Meyer Street. So January, February timeframe, Monroe, Meyer Street should be a tour of mess. That's all I have.
Sure. Any questions? Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. Go to the order. Mr. Sherman?
Just real quickly, I want to say, you know, we're going into Thanksgiving holiday. It's time to hand out presents. Life can change or come to an end very quickly, so I hope the ones here that are dear to you and hope everyone has a blessed day.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Nick Smith?
Well, me and my family did trick-or-treating here in town. Yeah, it was really nice. Lots of people were out canning out candy and, you know, it was great to see the fire department and the trash guys were out there and police. So it was a great event. Yeah, so thanks for everybody who helped make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Clement?
Yeah. Everybody have a safe and great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Trouble things. I want to say congratulations to the Nelsonville York Football Team on their success this season. They had a cold, hard game on Saturday, but they had a successful season overall. I want to congratulate them on that. I think they did really well. Wanted to say Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans and thank you for your service. Hope everybody had a great long weekend and everybody was safe. And I also want to echo Thanksgiving, you know, just, you know, we have a lot to be thankful for and hope that everybody stays safe and spends time with their families.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Child?
I just briefly want to mention that while the election recently may not have provided the results that everybody was hoping for, I think the city of Nelsonville still won. I believe that we have the right people in place doing the right things for the right reasons, and I think that's a win for the city. And Taylor, I appreciate all that you do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Child. I would like to echo Mr. Taylor's comments about the Nelsonville York Buckeyes. I had the opportunity to coach some of those kids in baseball early on, seventh grade, I think. Great group of kids, great group of seniors. I just wish them the best. I wish they'd keep playing, but I wish them the best, so...
And you just wish they were playing four-point.
No, I didn't want that. So I was hoping four-point would lose if Nelsonville won, so anyway. And with that...
We have executive...
Do you have anything? We need an update on some legal issues. Do you have any updates on that stuff? Some? Some. Okay, we can do a real quick one. Motion to go to executive session, O R C one-twenty-one dash twenty-two for personnel and legal matters, and the time is seven forty-five. So moved. Second, briefing question. I'm inviting in the city manager and legal counsel Bob Toy. We need Harry as well. And Harry Barber too. Chief Barber. Need motion, I second. Okay.
Mr. Child?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.